Fifty Liberty Drive.
Liberty Park Ave.
Liberty Park, South Avenue.
We got it? All right. We're gonna start this meeting. If we can start the meeting.
This is tonight's stuff.
Okay, the meeting of June 12th, 2018, for the Braintree Plan Vote will start with a roll call. Erin Joyce.
Present.
Dal McCallum.
Here.
James Downey.
Present.
And myself. I want to thank everybody for being here. We're gonna start. Before we do, there's something very important happening tonight. We've had the, I mean, the luxury, and I'll be honest with you, the fortune, we were fortunate enough to have a great member on this board, Mr. James Eng, who's president here today. He's officially resigned from the board and retired, but he will be an incredible loss. He's been, he started with the Conservation Commission in 1997. Became on the Plan Vote in 2008. So we're talking approximately 21, 22 years of service. Jim, on a personal note, I will tell you, being on the Planning Board has been hard. I wasn't on the Conservation Commission, were you? But I know what you've done on the Planning Board. You've taken a lot of grief from people. You did a hell of a lot of work for people. The town of Braintree won't ever realize what you've done for them. But I believe there's a saying, that the character of a person is defined by their willingness to plant the seed of a tree they'll never sit under. You planted many seeds out there. And though you may not have been able to enjoy them down the road, you are the one that planted those seeds for this town. The effort you put into this town, the effort you put into this Planning Board, I'll tell you, was incredible. A lot of people have been critical of the Planning Board over the years. A lot of people are critical of the decisions we make. But I will tell you, that Jim Eng showed the heart and care for this town that nobody here can imagine. The work and effort he put into this, nobody here can imagine. So though people may not be grateful in the long run for what we do, I will tell you, as Chairman of this Board, as Speaker on behalf of the Board, we couldn't be more grateful. You're an incredible member, and we thank you very much for everything you've done for us. So I'd like you to get up there. And I know your family had to deal with a lot. Based on decisions we made, I bet you they've been chased out of areas, too. So you know what? I'd like for you to introduce somebody you can to the people in the audience and to the people on TV.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for those kind words. I enjoy my entire 10 years on this Board, and I enjoy my 13 years on the Concom. And I feel extremely lucky to have served the town. My family is here tonight to wish me well. I feel that I am one of the luckiest people in this town. And I'm so glad that they're here to see me off. But I just want to say that serving on this Board gave me the pleasure of helping this town get through a lot of challenging projects. And with the support staff and with the Board, we've made this town a better town. So I just want to thank you, Bob, and the members of the Board for your support and for your expertise in making this Board one of the, one of the best Boards in this town.
Jim, one note, one I want to tell you, that as we go forward, wait a minute, I want to, I want to see. That as we go forward, and though you're not gonna be to my left, I will tell you this, that many times I will ask myself, what would Jim think about this? And what would Jim do about this? And what questions would he ask? So for me, I will tell you, you were a great mentor. You taught me things that I didn't know. I've been on the Planning Board 15 years in another town, but yet coming here, you taught me things I didn't know. So I want to thank you again for a personal note. You've been a great friend, you're a great mentor, and you've been a great member of the Board. So I want to leave you with that, but I want to say, I am incredibly grateful for what you've done for the town of Braintree, what you've done for us. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob. I just want to thank my family, my wife, Mary Ann, sitting back there, my two grandsons, which I'll be spending a lot more time with, my two sons, my two daughter-in-laws that are here with me tonight, and my daughter Jamie. She's looking for a job, by the way. But anyway, I just feel extremely lucky to have served on this Board and helped the town get through some, some, some of the challenges we went through. And we've had some great projects. You know, the pool, Lantern Lane, just to name a few. And thank you very much.
And you also tolerated my jokes, which was a really hard-to-do time. So thank you. But I know Mr. Reynolds wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Reynolds, Chief of Staff for Mayor Joseph Sullivan. The mayor was unfortunately unable to make it here this evening, but he wanted to make sure that, that Jim and the rest of the town understood how important a role Jim played and what an outstanding citizen Jim Eng is for the town of Braintree. As many of you know, I served with Jim and with most of you on this Board, the majority of this Board, for 10 years. We started out together under the new former mayor government. And as Jim had stated, that there were a lot of difficult projects before us and before this Board after I left, that Jim set an example for all of us to follow. He was a gentleman, he was fair, but he was tough. And I think that's a unique combination for an individual to have. For the town of Braintree, I think that his legacy, as will the legacy of this Board, will carry on for a number of years. It will be a very positive and show that it was had great foresight. During the time Jim served, I think that the, the effect he had on me, I think the Chairman put it very aptly. He was a mentor, he led by example, and he still leads by example and will continue to lead by example. What the town of Braintree loses, the state of Massachusetts gains for an individual of his insight, his patience, his keen ability to perform the due diligence that needs to be done on every project, which is owed to each applicant. Sometimes decisions weren't easy to make, but they were fair decisions, and they were well-balanced, and they were well-founded. So Jim, as I said, the mayor was unable to make it here this evening, but he had put together a proclamation, and I'd like to read this, Mr. Chairman, if I may. "The town of Braintree, to all people to whom these presents shall come, greetings. Be it known that the town of Braintree, in the county of Norfolk, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, does by authority of its mayor, recognize, celebrate, and honor the service of James 'Jim' Eng. In recognition of his more than 20 years of service to our community both as a member of the Conservation Commission and the Braintree Planning Board, signed in the executive offices at Town Hall this 12th day of June in the year 2018 and in the year of incorporation of the town of Braintree, 378. Joseph C. Sullivan, Mayor."
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you've got a very busy agenda. Just as a comment, if I may, Jim, as, as an example of his dedication unto all of you, we know that you guys spend late hours here, more than any other Board. It's greatly appreciated, and I know the people of Braintree greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Melissa?
Yes.
I guess we have to start.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we could, just before we get started with tonight's heavy agenda, if the Board could appoint a clerk, Jim was our clerk, and in his absence, that way we can just have somebody on the books going forward.
Will you seat back for a second? Will you seat back for a second? Oh, well, you start up front. All right. Mr. McCallum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So the Board is appointing a member, McCallum, as the new clerk. Awesome. Thank you.
Congrats.
Well, you start up front.
Um...
All right. Do you want to go? What's your cable slot? What do we have that's so big?
We've got a lot.
Oh, okay. How do you want to start?
Want to start with the hearings? Or do you want to take any of the small, or the zoning? Want to get that stuff out of the way?
Yeah, let's get the zoning done.
Okay.
So, would it be a motion to approve recommendation for the zoning Board?
A motion to approve the zoning Board recommendations based on staff recommendations for the projects on the June 8th.
Is there a second to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Want to start with the public hearings? Melissa?
Yeah.
Liberty Park?
(inaudible). And your public hearing, at least, there's the end.
Okay, we'll start off with Liberty Park. Fifty Liberty Park, file 1810. Notice given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Mass. &amp; Law, Chapter 48, Section 911, and the Braintree Zoning Order in Chapter 135, Articles 5, 6, 7, 11, and 12. Then a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will consider special permit application filed by Paul and Christina Kippenhan, property owners of Fifty Liberty Park Avenue. The applicant seeks to construct and/or perform the following installation of an in-ground pool, 18 by 36, surrounded by five-foot-wide concrete decking, 30 by 54 around the pool, and 150-square-foot poolhouse and 32-square-foot pump house. Installation of a block retaining wall, approximately 85 linear feet. Installation of a rain garden and the disturbance of approximately 4,000 square feet with grain to accomplish a balanced site with no import, export of materials to the site. The property is located at number 50 Liberty Park Avenue in Residence B zoning district and within the watershed protection overlay district as identified in assessors plan 1096, plot 1A, and is comprised of 28,163 square feet.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Keller with Merrill Engineers in Land Surveying out of Hanover, Mass., representing the applicant. The applicant, Christina Kippenhan, is with us this evening. As you just read, we are here for the property at Fifty Liberty Park Ave and are looking to construct... That's not working.
Does that one work? The handheld one work?
Does it work? Oh. Okay. There we go. Construct a swimming pool in the rear right corner of the property. As, as stated, this is a neighborhood area. We do have to the rear of the property. We are budding town forest, which does result in a 30-foot buffer to, along the rear property line. When looking at this site, it is a small property, and looking at the location for the pool itself, ideally you'd like to put a pool in the rear, rear yard area. On this property, we have limited area to the rear. The majority of the back is tight from the property line to the existing structure. Therefore, we were looking in the rear right corner for the location of the pool to provide a connection to that outdoor living space to the rear of the home, as well as providing a visual connection for pool safety. Therefore, we're before you this evening looking for a special permit, as well as site plan review, for the construction of a portion of the pool retaining wall and patio area within the 30-foot buffer. We are proposing landscaping along the property line, between the property line and the retaining wall associated with the pool construction. We, we are proposing a block retaining wall, which on average is between three and four feet. It does taper off to either end, but the maximum height is just under four feet in the northeast corner as it, it runs a parallel with the rear property line and then up towards the front of the site. We are looking to improve stormwater management on the site as the site does collect runoff from Liberty Park Ave through a catch basin or area drain, as well as a swale that comes down the easterly side of the property and comes into a riprap swale area and ultimately ends up flowing off-site to the north. We're removing some of the stone riprap area and replacing it with lawn, loomed swale area flowing into a rain garden, which will help regenerate the stormwater prior to flowing off-site to the north to the town property. The pool itself will be maintained. We did provide a pool maintenance plan with our operation and maintenance plan also to maintain and have the upkeep of the rain garden responsible, responsibility of the homeowner. The pool shed maintenance area and maintenance equipment are outside the 30-foot buffer. Approximately 40 percent of the pool area is within that buffer area. The 30-foot, excuse me, the 30-foot buffer area. We have, we have last fall, stepping back a moment, we did meet with ZBA and request a variance for lot coverage as this project would put us over the minimum 20 percent. We did obtain a variance from ZBA to allow us to put this pool in and bump us up to 25, 20 percent, 20, excuse me, 27 percent lot coverage with this construction. We have filed with Conservation as we will be, this work would be in the wetland buffer to the resources associated with the town forest and Cranberry Brook located on the town forest property. We did just receive staff comments this evening, so we can, we can look at those and discuss those as well.
We're gonna open it up now to the public. If anybody wishes to come forward, please identify yourself. Step forward.
Charles Kacoros, District One Counselor. I rise in support of the applicant. I think that they've done quite a job at putting together some mitigation for this particular pool to be installed. And I would ask the Planning Board to consider this, and I know that you've got a process here, but I would hope that you guys would come to a favorable action eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else wishes to come forward, please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm James Hanlon. I'm directly next door to Christina, who is my daughter, and kind of been representing her all along. I just wanted to say that I recommend them as great people, but also, the original plan that we sent in had the pool 67 percent in the buffer zone, and we were asked to make a good faith effort to turn the pool and get as much of the project out of the buffer zone, which we did. And we turned it around so that now there's only 40 percent in the buffer zone and 60 percent out. Just wanted to say that there are five houses surrounding the Kippenhan home. All five have pools. All five are butt to the town forest. And I'm hoping that you guys will vote yes for the three, five, seven, and nine-year-old kids that'll be in that pool. Thank you very much.
If anybody else wishes to come forward? Please come forward, identify yourself. Okay, you need, you need to have the microphone.
My name's Paul Cleary. And this is the first time I've seen the proposal. The only thing, question I had is, where's the fence going?
The pool fence? You guys have to use the microphone?
Yeah. Pass the microphone back and forth, please.
The pool fence follows the stairway, comes around the pool along the retaining wall here, comes up and wraps around the poolhouse, ties back in up into the gate right here at the steps. So the pool would be completely fenced in.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none right now, what I'm gonna do is open up to the Board. Member Downey, any questions or comments?
How high is that fence?
The fence is, let's see if I can see the note. It's a standard pool fence. Apologize. No. It's a four feet, four feet chain link, black chain link.
Christina, I'm looking at your report and it says it wasn't noted in the plan. Is that, is that different from that?
It is noted, and we did get a subsequent plan this afternoon that showed it on the retaining wall as well. It was hard to follow because I think you're running it on the retaining wall and then bringing it to the building, the poolhouse.
Correct. That is correct, yes.
It was just, there was a lot in a very small area, and, and I think she's explained it now clearly. You know, the code requires that it has to be enclosed.
Is there a height minimum on the fence?
Five feet, six, four, yeah. They'll deal with the building department on that.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Member McCallum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Keller?
Keller, yes.
Keller, okay, hi, thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, we're all, we like pools, we'd like the kids to enjoy it. But, you know, this is a significant infringement in the buffer zone. So my question is, has the applicant looked at alternatives which would place it outside of the buffer zone and therefore not have any problems whatsoever? You know, one of the concerns that we have is that whenever we have these types of projects, we're creating a bad precedent. And like I said, this is a significant incursion. It sets a bad precedent. So have they looked seriously at, you know, being totally outside the buffer zone? And I, I know it's not gonna be as pretty or as wonderful as it, as it could be, but, you know, it saves a lot of problems, quite frankly, across the Board.
Yes, and I, I, I can understand your thought process. We did review the pool, the size of the pool, the location, and trying to shift it up and down that right-hand side because that seems to be the only location on the site that is available to locate the pool. Two things that we're very concerned about, which is, one is the drainage, the existing current flow patterns of the drainage. We didn't want to alter that on the property, and we wanted to make sure that we could maintain that. And pulling, pulling the pool farther south or to the front of the property would impinge on that drainage flow pattern, as well as we would lose that visual connection with the pool to the rear area of, of the property itself. That being a concern for pool safety if anybody got into that pool area and no one could see. So those were the two thought processes and, and how we came. We originally, as Mr. Hanlon was mentioning, we had the pool rotated so you could see the entire pool from the outdoor area to the rear of the property. Knowing that most of the pool was then inside the buffer, we rotated it to try to get as much of the pool outside of the buffer.
Well, I'm not sure that I'm compelled by some of your comments because, you know, from the drainage standpoint, you could certainly figure out how to mitigate that or change the drainage, even though it might be a natural flow. You could probably figure that out. And then certainly, and secondly, you know, I understand from a visual standpoint, but there are safety features, fences, and so on, associated with the pool. So I'm really gonna come back to my original question. Why can't the owner position the pool so it is completely outside of the buffer? It's, what I'm hearing from you is that it doesn't, it's gonna look better, and it's gonna, you know, work better for the property, and it's gonna make it more. I, I understand all those things. But the biggest problem that I have, and we see it time and time again, is setting a bad precedent. And having, you know, people essentially create their own problems. You know, you talked about lot coverage before. You had to go and, you know, get that changed. So I'm just wondering out loud, why are we, why is, why is the homeowner creating their own problem? And when, when they could theoretically, you know, locate it totally outside the buffer, if they had to? Let me ask you this. If they had to, could they do it?
Not, not, not this pool configuration, no.
Okay, so they, so they could have a smaller-sized pool, then?
They could put in a smaller, but this is, this is the pool size that was chosen for, for the design, yes.
I understand that. But that's, that's, you know, what we're here. We're, we're here kind of looking at what they want versus what the rules, you know, are quite definitive about, and which, you know, puts us in a position to kind of try to have to figure out, you know, what do we do?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure you've heard these, you know, you understand our, our perspective.
I do appreciate it. We did, we thought about it, and we're, we're looking for opportunities to mitigate for the encroachment and looking at drainage. We were looking to add stormwater treatment to the site, to stormwater that's not being treated currently as a benefit to the project, as well as looking at additional landscaping along the rear property line to help with that visual, visual screening from the town forest property. And I do understand that we are asking for a special permit for this project, and, and therefore we were trying to think outside the box as to what we could provide to allow, allow this encroachment in the 30-foot buffer.
Sure. Respectfully, though, the screening does not compensate for 40 percent incursion in the buffer, you know, when I look at it. So I, I'm not trying to be mean. I mean, these, these are the issues, and obviously we have to deal with it. But I, I'm very concerned about the precedent that we're setting here. And, you know, we've seen these types of things before. So I'm just asking, is, is your, is the homeowner willing to go back and take another look at it?
Yep.
When you say, can we relocate the pool or bring it forward? There's an easement there. So as you bring the, the pool forward, and we've gone over where to put the pool and where we could move it to, and, again, it comes back to safety. You know, we'd like the people in the pool, which would be the children, to be seen by the adults, first of all. But as you pull the pool forward, the easement is on an angle. So as you pull it forward, it moves closer to the house. And to pull it forward and get it out, you'd be right beside the house almost, and behind the house in the shade. Well, a pool in the shade is not...
I, I understand you, what your comments are, sir, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna let some of our other experts here address the easement issue. But again, you know, the, the issue is you're creating your own problem by making this incursion, incursion into the buffer. And you're setting, you're, you're forcing us to, you know, like I have said now for the fifth, fifth time, you know, a bad precedent really for the town.
Right, so we're looking for...
So we're very, we're very concerned about that.
Yeah.
Okay, because we could then have a string of people. Next thing you know, we're gonna have everything abutting, the wetlands, the town forest, going on the list. That, that's our problem. Okay? So, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Member Joyce?
Thank you. Oh, just to tag on, just with regards to the sewer easement. So there's an existing sewer running down along that side. Yeah, the east side of the property line. Do you know how deep that sewer is? Do you have any information on its elevation?
We do. We have the invert at the street, and then we have the invert at the, right at the rear property line. And I do believe, of course, it's so gray that I can't, I can't see it, but I, we are below it by several feet with the grading that's proposed.
The sewer is below?
Below, below, yes. We're allowing for proper cover over that sewer.
Is there any concern for the installation of the retaining wall essentially right over the sewer line?
We've kept the retaining wall construct. It is, it's a 20-foot-wide easement, but the retaining wall... the retaining wall does not go over the actual pipe.
It looks like it's right on top of the pipe at the end point.
At this corner here, it's, it's a couple feet off from the pipe, but also this portion of the retaining wall, the first section here is between six inches to a foot and a half in height. So, the, the tallest retaining wall would be in this rear corner, which is actually outside of the sewer easement, which would be, I believe it calks out as 3.8 feet.
The height of the retaining wall?
The height of the retaining wall.
The highest portion of it?
Yes, that is correct.
How deep is the pool? Do you have an approximate bottom of excavation for the pool elevation?
Do you have, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't respond. What's the depth of your pool, of the pool anticipated?
Eight feet in the deep end, four feet in the shallow end.
Okay. There's noted and observed possible outcropping, is there any concern for ledge removal with the pool installation, or anything special that you'll be doing with regards to that?
Again, if we have to pull it forward, I'd have to blast.
If you have to what?
Pull the pool forward, if we have to relocate, there's outcroppings of ledge...
Yeah.
In the left rear and the left front.
So, do you, you anticipate that you'll be able to get the pool, the pool in there? The existing stone swale that's kind of running from the street down along the edge of the property there, what is that?
It, it's just crushed stone swale from the discharge. There's a, Liberty Park Ave drains down towards this corner where the driveway entrance is. There's a catch basin here that has a four-inch pipe that runs through the sewer easement and discharges just to the left here, almost right in the middle of the pool, proposed pool. As well as, I believe, once that catch basin and the pipe are full, the overflow spills over this paved apron here and flows onto the property, and so that riprap swale controls that runoff.
Is there a drainage easement associated with that?
I, I could not find one.
Is there, is there much water that flows through that, that you've observed over time? I'm just curious.
Natural rainwater, you know, nothing visible.
Yeah. So you think that rerouting that around the pool will be a sufficient way to manage that water?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, I, I share similar concerns with, with Member McCauley with regards to the pool being located in the buffer zone. Now, when we talk, when we're talking about the buffer zone, just to confirm, that's the 30-foot buffer zone from the open space, correct? That's the buffer zone we're talking about? Just for people's reference, 'cause there's wetland buffer zones out there, and I just wanted to make sure we're...
It's the zoning open space, 30-foot buff.
The 30 feet from the...
They have filed a notice of intent, 'cause they're within the 100 feet, and they're right at the 30-foot line, but conservation will wait on that, it just got filed.
Okay. If I may, Christine, is there anything else from a staff perspective to mention?
I had a couple of questions, and I apologize for them getting the report so late, but one was how you're gonna install the retaining wall without going on the town property? Are you gonna seek an easement from the town?
I, I don't believe that you need, need one, it, it is a block wall, so no full foot, footing is required, so full excavation to put, pour a footing would not be necessary here. Again, Mr. Hanlon was reminding me that this is a block wall, so it can be removable if necessary with regard to any maintenance that's required within the sewer easement. And with regard to the ledge, we would imagine that that would be pinned into the ledge and...
If I can, for the chairman, the other question I had is, you mentioned there's ledge in the front yard, have you done exploration? I thought he said the left front.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Hanlon to clarify. Where, where you found ledge in the front?
Perhaps I missed it, is it on the plan?
Right, yes. This may not have been completely visible when we did the survey, so it wasn't identified on our plan, but it...
So the ledge that you're pointing to is where the pool house is going?
It's in front of it, if we, as I said, if we move everything forward, we not only go closer to the house, get into the shade, but also get into the ledge.
Okay. That wasn't, I think it should be shown on the plan then, if you have...
Okay.
It's not apparent.
Okay.
So however you discovered it, I think it should be noted on the plan.
Okay.
And I like the idea of the rain garden, I think that's a good way to manage that, the drainage around the, say, I don't have concerns about drainage as much as I have concerns for just building that in that area with, with the ledge and the sewer easement and the encroachment in the buffer space. So I guess you just have to weigh if they've accounted for it enough with the stormwater management and additional plantings, and that they have no other, no other options. So, I think I'm all set for now.
I'm all set for now too, actually, we're gonna put this over to the next meeting. If you could work with the department as we move forward?
Yes, yes.
Answer any questions they may have, and, okay, so we can just see what happens at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Chair will take a motion to continue this.
Is it July, Mr. Chairman?
I guess, yeah, I just wanna bog down July too much. I don't wanna bog down July too much. We may have to consider at some point having a meeting in June, another meeting in June. But, we'll talk about that.
Well, if we, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if we set a date now, we can't change it.
No, 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 they're different, I'm just saying for other, for other issues.
Okay, but do you want this one on for July?
This will be off for July, yes. Yes, motion to continue July.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item until July.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for ever?
Aye.
Can you just sign the extension form, please?
Melissa, what was that date for people, July?
July 10th.
July 10th at 7:15.
So the next matter is...
I don't think so, prove it.
Okay. The next matter on the agenda is 84 Pearl Street and French Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, we, we opened this one last month, so we don't have to read the notice, and just for the record, there's only four eligible members to participate and vote this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These four, these four of us.
Yes. Get me all confused on this one.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Frank Marinelli, I'm pleased to appear this evening on behalf of Bill Frazier, and as the board knows, this is an application to construct 15 residential apartments on Mr. Frazier's land that's located at 84 Pearl Street and French Ave. With me is Bill Frazier, and also his daughters Cheryl and Laurie, who, all of whom are involved in the property management business. Also with us is David Kelly of Kelly Engineering Group, and they prepared all of the plans that you have in the record. The current proposal is known as Hampton House, and, and the, the density of the Hampton House is gonna be 13 one-bedroom units and two townhouse units. And the name Hampton House comes from the Hampton House that existed on this site 100 years ago, and it was a mixed-use building with residential above and some commercial on the first floor. The apartments are proposed as a single building of 13 units, 13 one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom townhouses. The site that is shown here on the site plan is about 19,000 square feet, 18,900, and the site is currently undeveloped, paved lots. The 13 apartments in a single building would be constructed directly to my right, which is the building and the facade, the mansard facade that you see on the elevations beyond on the next easel. And those, those apartments, that facade facing French Avenue is, is the larger building. The other building is two three-story townhouses, and each with two bedrooms in a single building, and again, we have the elevations that show that facade, and that, that building faces Pearl Street. This will represent an additional investment in South Brantree Square by Mr. Frazier in the amount of approximately $2 million. Anyone coming to the Hampton House Apartments will enter off of Randall Avenue. Randall Avenue is the short road that comes off of Pearl, and when you come in off of Randall, you'll have, you can take a right into the, into the townhouses, the townhouse garages, the two garages for the townhouses will be right there. You'll have a ground, the ground-level garage door, one inside parking space for each of the two townhouses. And you can enter the townhouse from the front door shown there on Pearl Street with the walkway, or you can enter in the back when, when you pull your car in and you walk up to the first floor, which has the kitchen and the family room, and then the, that would be on the second floor. The ground level is the part, is the garage, second floor, the family quarters, and the third floor is the bedrooms and, and so forth. So, that's the layout of the two townhouses. And then, if you are going to the 13-unit building, you would again come in off of Randall Avenue and, and pull into the parking lot. There's 22 parking spaces for the 15 units. You would pull under the cantilevered building, you'd enter the building, there's a laundry room and an office on the first floor, one unit, one-bedroom unit on the first floor, then the second floor has six one-bedroom units, and the third floor has another six one-bedroom units, a total of 13 in that building. The next thing to cover is the, is the landscape plan, and the landscape plan which, do you have the separate, well, the landscape is shown here, and it shows an addition of five trees and over 120 shrubs. Mr. Frazier is providing with Hampton House almost twice the general business zone open space requirement. He's providing 19 percent open space, the open space requirement in the general business zone is 10 percent. He provided more open space than required at 60 Pearl as well. You recall that in 2014, he built the adjacent 18 apartments, and in that, in that project, we actually installed the pocket park that exists and is, is really enjoyed by people who are walking along Pearl Street or, or driving by. So, he's done a good job with the 18 units, and this is the remaining two lots for the 15 units. The approval by the zoning board and the planning board of 60 Pearl that I mentioned in 2014, and this proposal, our investments in housing in the downtown area, in the downtown center of South Brantree Square, so you can have people living there, being able to walk to the square, to restaurants, banks, hair salons, Shaw's, supermarket, other stores, town hall, drugstores, the post office, churches, and other goods and services with little need for a car. And secondly, this type of housing is transit-oriented development, the acronym TOD. It is easily walkable to light rail to the Red Line, .3 to .4 miles, and again, without reliance upon a car. So it's, it's classic transit-oriented housing site, and it's a classic downtown revitalization site. And again, where housing is reasonable, necessary, reasonably, reasonably priced and easily accomplished, and entirely upon Mr. Frazier's property, including all of the off-street parking spaces for both 60 Pearl, the 18 units, and the 15 units, all off-street parking. The planning board in the 60 Pearl decision 13-09 made a finding that's just as applicable today with the Hampton House, and it's the finding number eight, and it said, quote, "The introduction of quality multifamily-style dwelling units within walking distance of goods and services eating establishments and transit provides a level of convenience currently lacking within South Brantree Square. Not only is this use compatible with the Village District, but it will improve the overall appearance and result in a positive impact to the area from a social, economic, and sustainable aspect." The same rationale, we respectfully submit, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, applies today with the Hampton House proposal. Just to continue on the need for housing, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council projects a need of about 44,000 additional housing units on the South Shore by 2030 in order to remain competitive as a region. And on, it's, it's not just for people that are commuting into Boston, young professionals, the 2030 report presents a need for TOD downtown housing for commuting workers, seniors, retiring baby boomers, and bringing a younger workforce to the South Shore who can easily commute by rail. The demand for this type of housing is further proven by the 2014 development, 18 units, and is 100 percent occupied and has been for about two years. On February 26th of this year, the zoning board in decision 1801 granted its approval to the Hampton House proposal, the 13 one-bedroom units and the two townhouses. The zoning board followed the planning board's unanimous favorable recommendation, which this board voted on February 13th. The, the parking proposed for the Hampton House is 22 parking spaces for 15 units, it's more than adequate for TOD downtown-type development. We have the Mueller Associates Parking Report, Parking Assessment Report that's in the record, and that details a lot of statistics to find that the 1.3 parking spaces per bedroom is well above the .8 to point, to one parking space per bedroom that ITE and comparable developments present as parking required for TOD residential. According to the Mueller Parking Study and onsite observations, residents of 60 Pearl, the 2014 development, used just 17 of the 23 parking spaces. And that's an average of .94 parking spaces per bedroom. Here, when we do the additional 15, we'll have 1.29 parking spaces per bedroom or .35 more than 60 Pearl. So, again, the parking is, is more than adequate for the 15 units based upon ITE, all of the statistics. The landing zone, which the town has adopted, is .8 parking spaces per unit in the landing. This is a similar downtown residential area, and we've got .5 more than, than the, than the landing standard. And this is all off-street parking that's being proposed. So when the Hampton House is developed entirely on Mr. Frazier's land, there'll be 34 parking spaces that serve 18 units because there's another 11 that are available at night on the westerly side of 60 Pearl Street, and then there's another 22 serving this development. So that's a total of 56 off-street parking spaces... So that's a total of fifty-six off-street parking spaces located entirely on the Frazier property and serving the thirty-three-unit complex. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, Bill Frazier has a long history with South Braintree. When Hampton House is finished, the investment that he has made with these developments and acquisition will be approximately $5 million. As a young man, Bill worked for his father, John, who owned Frazier Electric. That business was located on Hancock Street, just beyond Rite Aid, and Bill's father was very involved with the South Braintree Board of Trade, was a director of the Braintree Cooperative Bank, and a wiring inspector for the town. Bill grew up in South Braintree, wanting to invest in and improve South Braintree Square, his home area, and he has done that. Twenty-five years ago, he bought stock of lumber across Pearl Street from the site, and he developed much-needed commercial space that today provides storage space for area businesses. His tenants include South Braintree merchants in that development. In 2009, when the six odd parcels that comprised the 1960s-type motor vehicle dealership, Pearl Street Motors, came up for sale, Bill took the risk. He bought the parcels. He repositioned that south part of South Braintree Square from an old auto dealership to more harmonious TOD residences. And the Hampton House, as stated, when finished, will amount to an over $5 million investment in the transformation from an old incompatible dealership site to much-needed downtown housing and TOD housing with an aesthetic and landscape campus. We respectfully submit, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, that all of the requirements for granting the special permit have been met in all of the materials that have been submitted. We've worked through any remaining details with Ms. Santucci-Rozzi. There was a question that came up about the circulation. Could it be made one-way in some areas? Because it's a small campus, we think that people parking and the backing-out maneuvers would like to leave it with two ways where the arrows are on the pavement, and I don't think there'll be any confusion. Whereas with one-way and a narrowing of the pavement, it could cause some issues. Just to go over some of the other items that we did address, most recently, there's the applicant shall provide the height calculations for each building, which we did. There's no question that they're within the zoning bylaws. They all comply, and I know that Ms. Santucci-Rozzi agrees with that. It was just that the numbers had to be provided, and they were. Mr. Frazier has a sketch on how the wall, the existing wall on French Ave would be modified. We've provided that. And there are questions about the lighting, and that the lighting will complement or match the lighting at Sixty Pearl. It will complement or match the existing lighting at the other development. So I think that, also, there was a question about providing on the east side of Randall Avenue the suitability of constructing some ADA-compliant sidewalk, and we have proposed to do that. When you first enter off of Pearl Street, we're going to bring that sidewalk in ADA-compliant right over to the entry, to the parking lot. So that's a pretty flat parking lot that will then, off of the ADA-compliant sidewalk, allow access throughout that parking lot. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions, and respectfully ask for the board's support on the special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Mr. Marinelli.
One thing I'm going to do is first open up to the public. If anybody has any comments or questions, please come forward, identify yourself. Okay, so not seeing anyone, I'm going to open up to the board. Member Downey?
You were talking about the flow of traffic on those side streets. Randall Avenue, is it two-way?
Yes.
Not a one-way currently?
Yeah, it's two-way. It's two-way.
And what about when it turns there back towards Washington Street? Is that, is there access to Washington Street there on Randall Ave?
What happens when you turn, you then come to the parking lot on the westerly side of Sixty Pearl. So it pretty much dead-ends.
Yeah.
It dead-ends right there.
Okay. And there's no, so Randall doesn't connect over to French Ave or anything like that or to Washington?
No.
Okay. You'd mentioned that you got the height requirements to Melissa. Is that accurate?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yes, that is accurate.
And the same for the revised landscape plan, based on what you were talking about tonight? Is that, are they?
They have submitted the, excuse me, the revised landscape plan. It came in kind of late today, and I had already finished the draft conditions, so there are a couple things that say need to be revised that have been provided, and those are included in your packet.
And what are these sites used for currently? What goes on there as far as the parking lots?
As far as the eighteen units?
What's there now? What is?
Oh, they're open paved lots. One, the back, one lot is, has a tendency, it will, arrangement with a restaurant. And the other parking lot is just paved and available.
It's not used?
No. No.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Certainly an ambitious plan, Mr. Marinelli, from what it used to be forty-odd years ago. Quite a transformation, Mr. Frazier. So looks quite interesting. My first question is for staff, and that pertains to the density. Do we, is it appropriate? Is it, you know, I know it fits with the Village overlay, but, you know, just general comment on density?
Yeah, the density is, well, they obviously obtained some relief from the zoning board of appeals, and I would say the density is similar to the density of the first building at Sixty Pearl that was constructed a couple years ago. I think breaking up the two types of structures allows for some small scale along Pearl Street and then the larger building on the French Avenue side, and it kind of orientates nicely. We had talked about this in detail. So now you have buildings, and all the parking is in the middle and behind. So all your frontage is connecting with the street and has a facade. You're not going to be looking at any cars. So all the parking will be accessed down on Randall Avenue. They did obtain parking relief. They did obtain density relief. But I think Sixty Pearl and how that sort of played out and the parking demands of that particular site helped, I know the staff and the department on determining, you know, this is there, it's working, and there's also a business use there. There haven't been any concerns with parking whatsoever. So it's essentially piggybacking off the first development, similar density and similar parking.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Marinelli, what's the projected impact on the schools?
I don't think we have any school-aged children in the, why don't you answer according to your tenants?
Could you speak in the microphone, sir, please?
Yeah.
Yes, my name is Bill Frazier. Right now, in the existing eighteen-unit apartment building, there were all one-bedroom units, the sixteen one-bedrooms and two studios, and there's no children in the building at all. The projection of the new building that we're going to be putting up, the thirteen-unit, has thirteen one-bedrooms, and the townhouse building is going to have two two-bedrooms. So there could be one or two children either on both sides or just one.
Okay, so minimal, but, okay. Okay, thank you, sir. And just going back to the parking for a second, I know Member Downey touched on it. At Sixty Pearl now, does each resident have designated parking? Do they have their own space, or is it just open parking?
It is a twenty-three parking space lot, which is not filled, you know. According to the study, there were six available pretty much at all times the study was conducted, so they're not assigned. Just at a small campus like that, didn't feel the need to do that. And in talking with Ms. Santucci-Rozzi, she also had suggested that, or indicated anyway, and I know she can speak for herself, but there's eleven spaces on the other side of the building that are pretty much used by the hair salon during the day, and at night, you know, you can drive through there as I have, and nobody's even parking in there. And those would be available if there was overflow. But the twenty-three available parking spaces for the eighteen units is working terrific, and the twenty-two spaces for fifteen units, we expect to work the same.
Okay, so no designated parking?
No.
And just let it be the same? And I've made a note, when you talked about the Frazier property parking, you were talking about the hair salon, so and so, it's just, those are the really public spaces there if needed be. They're not just, they're not designated, they're not owned by Mr. Frazier.
Right. The eleven spaces are...
On the street, on-street parking.
No, the eleven spaces are on the westerly side of the Sixty Pearl building.
Oh, okay. So the residents would be allowed to park there with their guests?
There's like eleven, twenty-three, twenty-two.
Right, okay. So there should be plenty of parking, okay. And since the assistant director talked about facades, are we going to have different facades for these three buildings, or are they going to have all the same facades? Or has that been decided yet?
Yeah, the elevations are right here. That's the thirteen-unit building, and then further down are the facade facing Pearl Street of the two townhouses. The color is, why don't you speak to that?
Maybe I should say also the color.
Yes, the color, we had on the, it's on the drawing, I'm pretty sure. It's a little lighter than the existing one at Sixty Pearl Street, but it is going to have architectural shingles on the roof, and it's going to be all vinyl siding. And all the white is going to be the plastic azac, kind of dresses it off nice.
Okay, so slightly different.
Correctly.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you very much. And I noticed there's going to be some changes to the lighting. Is that something that Mr. Frazier is going to take care of, or is Bell going to do it, or is it some combination?
I'm going to be doing the...
Okay, if you could just speak in the microphone, Mr. Frazier.
There's a few more light poles they're going to be putting in, in the parking area to illuminate the area. And on the front of the building, we're going to have, we have two other parking lot fixtures as well. I think they're ten- or twelve-foot poles, and with the splashing lights that shine down on the building like the other one has as well.
Okay.
So everything's going to match up and look the same on all the buildings.
Very good, sir. Thank you. And Mr. Marinelli, when you said that there's going to be twice the open space at nineteen percent, you were counting both the two lots together as opposed to, you know, one versus the other? It's collectively, right?
Yes, the eighteen thousand nine hundred square feet together provides the site. So all dimensional and density calculations that are on Mr. Kelly's site plan combine the two lots.
Okay. And is there more open space on the multi-unit one as opposed to the two-family one? Is that the case?
Well, yeah.
No, no, I know it's one. I'm just asking if you knew offhand.
I think when you, you know, when you take a look at the site plan, you look at all of the various islands and so forth, but, you know, maybe David has a more precise answer. But there's, you can see where the open space is, on the edges around the building.
I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just say that it's quite a transformation. I know Mr. Frazier is making a major investment. What he's done so far, you know, is very nice, so...
Thank you.
I hope it, you know, looks like it's going to continue on, so appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The two parcels, as it exists today, are there separate parcels?
Yes.
Is Eighty-four Pearl, it's two parcels?
Yes.
The one with the townhouse, and there's the multifamily parcel? Will they remain separate parcels?
No.
Or will they be all one parcel after this?
All one parcel. All one development, one site.
Do you know if, from a utility service perspective, a single parcel can have multiple sewer connections and multiple water connections to a single parcel address? Perhaps the engineer might...
We've already reviewed the plan with the engineering DPW, and they've had no comments, and I don't think there's any restriction on that.
Okay.
And the utilities are readily available, and there's no capacity issue.
Yeah. I was just thinking of a logistical perspective, what there being technically maybe two meters or how it was metered.
Yeah, there'll be two water meters, for sure.
Is, so it looks like the multifamily building is sprinkled, and then the townhouse building would not be sprinkled?
That's correct.
Okay. There's an existing drain that's running across the site?
Yes.
That's bringing off-site water across? Is there any sort of existing drainage easement across the parcel for that?
So that takes drainage from Mr. Frazier's parcels. It doesn't come from anywhere else. It services the rear parking lot that was constructed as a part of the first project. There's a catch basin in the center of that. It ran at an angle and towards the town's drainage system. We're relocating that around the building, but I suppose to the extent that Mr. Frazier decides to split these projects up at some point, easements could be created, but none are proposed.
Okay. With regards to the parking lot layout, was there any, it looks like there's a lot of open, there's two openings from Randall Ave into the parking, well, actually, three openings, I guess, from Randall Ave into the parking lot. And I'm just wondering if there was any consideration for perhaps closing the one along Randall Ave to make more of, you know, a closed parking lot? Why all the access points? Does that cause any concern?
It's a really good question, and in fact, it's, and Melissa, I see, is nodding over there. We spent quite a bit of time back and forth on this plan in the early stages. At one point, we even considered possibly a petitioning to abandon that section of Randall Avenue to create a sort of a uniform area that could be used. But we looked at every configuration, and the biggest concern was getting fire trucks in and through the back of the site and back out, and it would be impossible with just one entry. So we decided to leave it as it is. We created landscape. We don't, even in the other options, we really weren't, if you were to lay, take out your pencil and paper, you would see that even if you closed off Randall Avenue, that you actually don't get that much more because the parking is such a small area that it gets inefficient very quickly.
Yeah. I mean, I was thinking just the longer one that's more parallel to Randall Ave. Not that one, the other one.
Over here?
That one. No, just closing it off along the edge of the...
Oh, along here?
Yep, that one.
It's just more difficult to travel through the property, but I suppose that, I suppose that could be done. It just, I think it just makes it a little more complex. This is a really, these are really underutilized sites, as you've started to see and explain by Attorney Marinelli, and so you don't have a lot of traffic conflicts, and we're not particularly worried about that aspect of it.
Okay. And so the existing building on the corner, that's a restaurant, correct?
That's correct.
And it will, as far as anybody knows, remain a restaurant?
For the current time, that's my understanding.
Do you anticipate any people parking from the restaurant in that parking area? Is there any concern for that? Where do people park for the restaurant now?
So there is a ten-and-a-will agreement with the existing parking lot that that restaurant utilizes. That's in the location of the larger building on this property. But there's adequate, we've actually done a study, there's adequate parking, particularly at night, on the surrounding streets, including, there's a small parking area across, directly across the street from the restaurant, that has, is used by the MBTA during the day. There's something like twenty-four to twenty-five parking spaces on the surface within three hundred feet of that restaurant.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Mr. Marinelli, has the client read all the conditions?
Yes, we've reviewed the conditions.
Any issues with any of the conditions?
Yes, we're fine.
Are there any issues with any of the conditions, or?
No, there are some minor plan revisions that Ms. Santucci-Rozzi talked about that we're going to incorporate in the final plan, but the conditions are fine. We've been over them several times.
Incorporated?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for the lateness. We've been kind of going back and forth on a couple things to get this ready to be hopefully voted on this evening. and forth on a couple of things to get this ready, to be hopefully voted on this evening. And with the board's permission, on Attorney Marinelli's point, the draft conditions have been prepared, and they're here this evening. I'd like permission, if the board is so inclined to vote this evening, to work with the applicant. I'd like to weigh in a little bit more on the elevations, and I'm looking for the incorporation of a little bit of brick. I talked briefly with Mr. Frazier and Attorney Marinelli. I'm not looking for all the facades to be done, but just to break up the facades a little bit with some inlay or potentially some banding. And then with the board's permission, in case there are any errors or, or things in the conditions that need to slightly be revised based on the plans that we got today, I would like permission to make those revisions as well.
I think that's workable.
And that's pretty much it on my end. And I'd also just like to mention that in working with Mr. Frazier, that he's putting forward the inclusion of two deed-restricted affordable units as part of this development, which is a huge contribution and something that will also continue to benefit Braintree and South Braintree Square.
All right. Thank you. I am going to do a couple of things right now. What I'm going to ask is, I'd like to have a motion to...
And I didn't do a correspondence list. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Really tight, yeah, really tight on time this meeting. I'm really sorry.
I'd like to take a motion to enter into the record any all correspondence related to this program, this project.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
All right. Motion to approve the application for 84 Pearl Street, special use permit, special permit village overlay district site plan review, noting the conditions prepared by staff and the ability for staff to work through the outstanding items and the conditions that were drafted.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to jump ahead one second now. So why don't we do that whole issue?
Mr. Chairman, as we can see here, we have a very long and lengthy agenda. With the board's permission, I would like to bring forward the 36 Bramblewood Lane. I think the board remembers this application by the Caderises, 36 Bramblewood, for the retaining wall. The applicant did receive a favorable vote by the planning board for the grading permit with a series of conditions that I think both the board, the staff, and the neighborhood put some diligent time and effort into that. I've been speaking with the Caderises back and forth since the permit has been issued. And my instruction to the Caderises has been to get going on the wall. Their attorney, Henry Levin, is here this evening. He's put a letter in front of the board, not in the form of a modification, but simply a letter. The planning staff at this point is not in a position to support any kind of modifications, even though this is not in the proper format. Again, my direction is focus on the wall. Let's get the wall where the board voted it to be. There's very clear and precise conditions on how we're going to work through the plantings. And if I recall the board, there is the ability for the neighbors to pick some of the plantings, the Caderises to pick some of the plantings, and then I'm to serve sort of as the organizer of all of this. And as this board knows, and I've expressed to them, that when people can't get along or things don't go well, they come right back in front of this board, and the board weighs in. So again, I think they should get going on the wall. I think their concerns about the plantings are hopefully going to work themselves out. And again, if they don't, we have the board to weigh in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm Georgia Caderis, the owner of 36 Bramblewood Lane.
Yes.
As you mentioned, Mr. last, on the last meeting, this shouldn't have come to this, but that's okay. It came, we came to all the meetings. We agreed to bring down the wall. We agreed to, to plant trees across the wall for the back neighbor, so she won't have to look at the wall. Our problem is the next-door neighbor, who has a seven, eight-foot fence, and he wants five, eight to 10-feet-tall trees in his yard. So when he goes up to his bedroom, he won't have to look at the wall. Well, the wall is coming down anyway. This is an extra expense to us. So far, we spent $47,000 extra that we didn't have to do that because of, somewhere down the line, there was a mistake. And we have pictures of the fences of the back-door neighbor, which are over 40 years old, and they were caused to fall because of a plant that's in the middle of the, the other side of the neighbor. And I have pictures to show you.
You have to show us pictures right now.
The fence was never attached to the old railroad ties. They fell because of the age and because of what's in the middle. Can I present this to you?
Well, here's, here's what my suggestion is. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with what's going forward right now. But the plantings are going to be the second phase of anything. Wouldn't it be better to get the wall built, and then just the wall built, and then we could discuss the planting? I mean, the wall, really, the, the main issue is the wall and then the, the screening.
But sir...
Yeah.
It will be three years in October, and we haven't come to a solution.
You could build...
All we keep on adding things that the neighbors want.
You're not, you're not, you're not listening to what I'm saying. I'm not saying add anything. I'm saying, build the wall now. The screening, we can discuss it, we have to discuss it, we discuss it later. But right now, the wall should be built. Let's just build the wall, move it forward.
But shouldn't we have a picture of what to expect?
Well, is the wall itself going to change?
Yes, it's going down.
Okay. But the wall you're building, or you're, get that done first. We can, we always agreed that we can talk about the screening later, though there are conditions set. But right now, I, I think it's getting the wall at the level it should be, and the height it should be. I think that should be the priority right now.
Yes, sir. We're willing to do that.
And that's what I'm saying. Why don't we get that going, and we can discuss the rest, if it's, if it's applicable later?
But I have some forms here that say that we need to do something before the 15th of August.
You, you, the...
The planting.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that is the selection of the planting. So this started some time ago. We missed the spring planting season. So I wasn't going to force something to be done in the spring because it wasn't going to happen. So we pushed back the selection date to August. The walls, my idea was the wall's going to come down, people are going to get together, they're going to make suggestions, we're going to talk, we're going to talk to the landscaper, and hopefully things are fair and reasonable. Things don't become fair and reasonable, then we're back here and to discuss it, and then the plantings will go in, in the fall. That is at least what I intended when I wrote those conditions.
Yes. Mr. Still on it?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Henry Levin representing the petitioner here. Number one, I'm a little upset because I submitted a letter back in May asking for this hearing. I was never notified of the hearing. I found about this at 5:00 tonight by Mrs. Caderis. No notice was ever given to me. That's number one.
I will tell you, then we, I apologize for that.
Okay, number one. Number two, Mrs. Caderis met with Ms. Santucci. And Ms. Santucci said that I blew the, the deal because I didn't object to certain things. Those things were never brought up at the meeting, and they were injected into the decision. And that's what I'm upset about. And also, like, things like that the abudders will pick the, the, the plantings. That was never discussed.
I, I will address that. We never gave the complete authority to anybody to pick the abudders. We always said, this has to be a meeting of the minds of the, of you, of the applicant and the neighbors to get to discuss. We made it short. In fact, there was a phrase said at one point, that nobody can, you know, somebody can't come in and require you to put a palm tree there, you know. So, so we said, it has to be some sort of a reasonable arrangement. And we always said that if there isn't a meeting of the minds, that the department would then get involved.
I, I would agree to that. That's not what the decision reads. It said it will be picked by the abudders.
What the conditions say, and with all due respect, this board, I think I wrote the conditions like three months before we actually voted on it. So, and they're provided to the applicant, just to help do every meeting. And there are three subsections there. There is the plantings on Mrs. Ray's property, which she's going to weigh in on. The ones on Mr. Renares, which he's going to weigh in on. And the ones on the Caderises, which they're going to weigh in on. And then all of those are going to be, again, if there's a problem and people can't agree, like I said twice already tonight, I will get involved. Still no agreement back here. This is not to be ridiculous. This is not to be overly expensive. And again, I just cannot get, keep, keep going back to work on the wall, and the other things will fall into place.
Yeah, we, we made it clear that the, the neighbors are not going to dictate completely 100% what's going to go there. We made it clear, we didn't want that to happen because then it could be something that's not doable, or way too expensive. So we always made it clear, and I think the board may agree, the feeling's different. I'm only speaking for what I remember, is that everybody's going to give their proposal, and we're going to see, make sure it's reasonable. And then the department, any conflict, the department will deal with this. That's always has been the intention. And I think that is still the intention. I don't see any deviation from that.
And we agreed to that. We would submit a proposal. I think one of the members asked that we submit a proposal. We've had four different landscape people come down there to give us ideas as to what to do. The last thing is, it is not, it doesn't seem to be important, but there was never any discussion at the hearings about the terrace, except what was submitted.
Not the terrace, the five trees.
Yeah. And it's, what was submitted with the plan was a four-foot setback. When we got the decision, it's not much, but now it's a five-foot setback, and we had to redo the plans. I don't know where that came from. It was never discussed at this board.
Again, Mr. Chairman, this board has been getting the conditions for 10 years. They're made available for the sole purpose so that the board can have them ahead of time and the applicant. We have people here at every meeting asking about the conditions. Again, why these things weren't raised at the hearing, we had multiple hearings, I can't answer that question.
If the, if the five...
And nor was it appealed. They had, they had a right to appeal it, so.
Is the five-foot section a problem? Or can that be done?
There's no problem to it. My only concern, Mr., is that, that this was done without any discussion. Plans were submitted showing a four-foot, we'll agree, we've agreed to it.
Yeah.
We've agreed to it. I'm just trying to say that things were done here that weren't discussed at the board, at the meetings, and all of a sudden it showed up in the decision.
So what we're here tonight is, we would, we would like to know about the fences and the side trees. That's why we are today, Mr. Chairman.
I understand that. Here's what you're going, well, here's what we said, and we'll say it again. You have the approval for the, the, the wall, and you agreed to the wall.
Yes.
We also, in the discussion with the board, we said, the other collateral issues, like for instance, the, the proposal, the plantings, you will submit a proposal, the neighbors will submit a proposal, okay, make sure it's reasonable. And we're going to work out a reasonable solution. What we did never wanted was anybody to, for you, for instance, to want to put a plant that's two inches high, and for them to want to put a palm tree that's unreasonable.
Of course not.
So we said, so what we said was, submit the plans, build the wall, or do what you have to do with the wall. Submit the plans. If there's a huge conflict that you got, that can't be meeting in the minds, the department will take over negotiations at that moment and jump in. That's what we've always said.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that mean we have to come back?
No, that means you have to deal with the neighbors, produce, everybody produce their plans and what their wishes are. If you can't have the meeting in the minds, Ms. Santucci will be involved in it at that point. Unless it's a major modification or something very out, out there, you don't have to come before the board. You can deal with...
We don't have an objection of putting up plants as the neighbor wants. My back neighbor, I have an objection to the side of my property.
And that would be whose property, Mr. Renares, is it?
That is correct, yes.
And those plans, I, I think we've always said, I don't think there's ever been some ceiling, that the, they have to be screening on this property, the wall.
But his, his fence is eight feet tall. Why would he want trees on the other side of the fence?
I don't know what's in his mind, but I will tell you, let him give a proposal, and then let Ms. Santucci look at that, and we'll see what we can do there. We're trying to resolve this, okay?
I'm all ears.
But this has been so full of friction, and it's not your fault or their fault. I know what happened here. We all know the history here.
I know you do.
Okay, okay. So, since we all know the history of this, we're trying to get some sort of meeting the minds. So what you're going to do is, the neighbor's going to submit their plans, you're going to submit your plans, or what you, and Ms. Santucci's going to take a look at them. And you're going to, you're going to bring it together. With regards to the non-notice, I apologize for that. That shouldn't happen. It probably falls on me, and I apologize for that, Mr. Levin. You know me for a long time. I wouldn't sneak something around like that on you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, call the next thing.
The next hearing is the ESG Edge Sports Group for the Washington Braxton Street
You have to open this. This is already opened, right?
This one's already open, yes, Mr. Chairman, yes.
We're kind of waiting on you now.
I'm sorry.
We're kind of waiting on you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was actually staring at her cake. I apologize. It's been a long night. Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates here, representing the applicant, Mr. Brian DeVellis from Edge Sports Group, and also representatives of Thare Academy are behind me, who own this land. We haven't seen you for a couple of months. We had a few, few meetings on this application. So with the interest of not necessarily rehashing our discussion, I'd like to just get us up to speed as to where we are, and hopefully set the plan for this evening's activities, if I could. We did present the project. We did go through several rounds of comments, both with staff and board recommendations, and have subsequently revised our plans accordingly and submitted that information a couple of months ago. We were held in purgatory temporarily while we had to sort out the rezoning issues that surrounded this project. In order for us to have sufficient parking, we needed to rezone a portion of the land adjacent to us, to the highway business zone. That has now been completed. We did secure two-thirds vote from the town council approving that rezoning. So now we can stand here presenting to you a plan that is fully compliant with the zone in which it's in. And then, so long as we can get beyond the technical issues of the project, we're hoping that we could seek to close the hearing this evening and work through this board and also staff on identifying appropriate conditions for the project. So I'm happy to revisit any particular elements. We do have the team here with us tonight, if anything does come up. Sands, our traffic engineer, who couldn't make it this evening. If the board is so inclined, one of the items that we would like to iron out is, Ms. Santucci did provide us draft conditions. We have reviewed those as a team. We do have some comments on them that we could either work through here with the board this evening, or the opportunity to work with Melissa offline, as in previous instances, to really iron these out, specifically related to, to the traffic issues in terms of widening about Route 37, coordination of program elements, things of that nature. Everything else that's in the conditions, we can, we can live with. We just have to sharpen the pencil and make sure we clearly identify what Melissa's intentions were, so we can hit those marks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. What I'm going to do... What I'm gonna do, do you wanna pay a report on where we are on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, I have obviously gone through the plans, written some draft conditions. I don't really have any outstanding issues. So, if we wanna maybe talk about those conditions tonight for clarity, or however you wanna proceed, basically, they have provided us with the updated drainage plans, the updated reserved parking plans. Yeah, I mean, everything's in order.
You mentioned something about the traffic. There's some more details on the traffic, do we need, or?
I would turn to Mr. Caderro. Basically, what I have done, or the approach that I have taken, is, as we all know, there is a traffic light there now at the Braxton-Washington Street intersection. And looking at the trip generation, and looking at the level of service, and sort of the peak, the peak hour out there is actually very early. It starts at 3:45. And understanding a little bit about what's gonna happen at the facility in the afternoon, the difference between the no-build condition, which would be seven years out without this project, and then the build condition, which would be seven years out with this project, there is a decrease in level of service at that intersection. And what I've put in the conditions, they're projecting a decrease in level of service. Now, they might go out and do traffic counts, and we might not actually see that. As this board knows, when people go back and count facilities, we've generally seen, given this type of project, a 10 to 25% reduction in trip volumes from the projections that were made. So, if they go out and monitor, as stipulated in these conditions, and with several of our projects, and there is a decrease in level of service, we're gonna look to them to adjust the programming in that peak hour, to make sure that that intersection is functioning as needed. The other thing that had come up, and I did have a lengthy discussion with Daniel Mills, who's the traffic engineer, who's not here this evening, sort of my looking at the configuration of the road, and the right-of-way plan that he supplied, just looking at it, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, and taking some basic measurements. To me, it looked like there was the opportunity to add the right-hand turn lane. And after discussing this with Mr. Mills, he actually followed up and sent me an exhibit. And given the width of the roadway, the speeds of the roadway, and sort of the configuration of this intersection, that wouldn't be something that could happen, because the southbound lane would essentially move over, and would be lined up with the northbound lane. So, basically, they would be head-to-head, and the people that were continuing south would need to almost go over a full lane to stay onto Washington Street. And his professional opinion, and given the state road, that that isn't something that could be implemented in this particular location. So, again, I'm actually pretty confident that when they go and count, that there probably won't be a decrease in the level of service. It could be maybe achieved with some timing adjustments, or something like that, but just trying to maintain the integrity of the intersection and the level of service that's currently in place now, was, were my intentions.
And if I could, Melissa, we'll dovetail onto that. We're happy to provide the follow-up counts and the studies that you have recommended in the staff report. Obviously, we deal with a lot of empirical data relative to these sports facilities, so we'd love the opportunity to double-check the math, if you will. And, you know, should a level of service effect become evident, then we will circle back and certainly coordinate it.
Okay. Well, when we first open it up into the public, if anybody wishes to make any comments or questions, please come forward. Please come forward.
Charles Kocoros, District One Counselor, President Chairman. I just, I rise in support of this special permit. I think that it's been vetted quite successfully through the council, as well as this board. But the only comment I had is that there were some concerns about late-night usage, and I just wanted to reiterate that there wouldn't be any usage after, I think it's 10:00, or 11:00, or 12:00, or something like that. I don't know if you guys have the hours of operation.
What was that?
Do you guys have the hours of operation?
I can't hear anything tonight. I don't know if-
Do you have the hours of operation, the latest?
I actually, to your point, Counselor, Condition 67, I know we talked about that here, and I believe what we said was, people had to be off the ice by midnight. Somebody, does anybody have that in their notes? I actually was trying to go back to find that, and I left it blank, "off the ice", question mark, fill in the info.
If I, I'm sorry, to address Melissa's comment through the chair to the Mr. Counselor, we had testified previously, 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., with the hours of operation. That would be the, everybody off the ice by 12:00, and then 12:15, operational staff would be gone. You know, give them 15 minutes to close up the building. And as part of that discussion previous, we also want to work with staff regarding the light levels, because you had also made that recommendation in the staffing report previous, that we adjust the light levels accordingly based on the potential usage, so that the late-night levels, which are really adults-only, the light levels are consistent with that. So, the safety parameters are there, but they're certainly dialed back, so it's not, you know, noon time at midnight.
I have to comment, the lighting is very, now that everyone's using these LEDs, the foot candles are like, I actually thought they were kinda low, if I dare say that, but...
Mr. Caderro, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
We were just, several of us have in our notes that it was agreed to 11:00 p.m., and we had feedback from the, at least one resident here, at one of the meetings. I haven't, you know, we wrote it down as 11:00, so I don't know where midnight came from.
If I can, I know we did have an abutter here at one of the previous hearings who had concerns about those late nights, so we did discuss it very specifically, that the hours were 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And we had also discussed the similarity between the other sports facilities, so that was the common hours.
Irregardless, we heard 11:00 the last time. I have 11:00.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Mr. Chairman, Brian DeVales, President of ESG and the applicant. I think what you may be confusing, if anything, is, we said the 11 o'clock sheet was the last sheet. That's a 50-minute sheet that takes, there's no way we would've gotten to-
11:00, people off the ice.
I can tell you this, there's no way that this project would even get to February, never mind June, with that condition, so I don't know where that came up with, but it certainly wasn't presented by us.
Member Joyce has the same time on hers. Yeah.
All right, so, I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna give it to the board. Member Downey, any questions or comments you may have?
We talked last time about the video-based detection system not working on 37. Do you remember that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, the video-based vehicle detection system that's on Route 37. As you come off of Braxton, it's not working. Is that still not fixed?
I think the town, I think Dan Mills worked at the town.
Yes, okay.
It's a state signal anyways, it wouldn't-
Okay.
That's correct. Our traffic engineer has coordinated with Maston on resolving that issue.
Okay. That was my only follow-up question from last time. Thank you.
Member Kami?
Okay. Let's just resolve this. When did 11:00, I'll ask the staff, when do we have 11:00?
I'm actually having Ms. Stickney look at the, February was the last meeting that you were here?
Yes.
We're gonna look at the minutes right now online, just-
The only reason, primarily because, as you may recall, we did have residents come up, at least one, which talked about it, and then several of us had written down 11:00 p.m., the facility to be closed. So, just saying.
No, I understand, sir. So, as the meetings, the meeting minutes are reviewed, I do have from my notes from the February 13 meeting, that the hours did come up in conversation, and we, you know, we referenced the 6:00 to 12:00. So, we'll certainly seek clarity.
Okay, we got a problem here, because we have different thought. So, I'll go through my other questions here. I'm gonna start with my favorite question from Mr. DeVales. Have we defined the taxable area of this property? And again, my thought is not what the number is, but does it include the parking spaces? Does it include the facilities? Does it include any open spaces necessary? You know, blah, blah, blah. Have we clearly identified that on a go-forward basis?
Yeah, I can let Attorney Johnson clarify it on behalf of Thayer, but we certainly have a leasehold interest in a very defined piece of property that will be taxable.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, for the record, my name is Carl Johnson, and I represent the trustees of Thayer Academy. I noted, and there was a copy of a letter, that this issue came up, and I'd just like you to-
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
If I might, I have a, I have a, if it gets to the point of discussing conditions, I have a suggested condition that I would like to submit. And I think it has to do with the property. As you know, that, as Counselor Kocoros indicated, this recently, the entire property was rezoned to Highway Business District. That portion of the property that was Residence B was rezoned last week by the council, and became effective on June 7. And what that does is that the use is a commercial recreational use. It's classified as a taxable commercial use. The property that is reserved and owned by Thayer Academy is classified as an educational use, which is tax-exempt per statute. So, that, what I'm suggesting in here is that, in this area, besides what is shown, and I see it on the, on the plan, you can see the area which is a commercial recreational facility, which is the sheet and the third of ice, and the indoor turf field, there are tennis courts, there is also a parking area that exists now that contains approximately, it contains 102 spaces. As you'll see, the staff presented an analysis of where those spaces came from, that was set by the Zoning Board of Appeals in 2007, for disturb the four, the fields at that time. Three of the fields are disappearing. Therefore, what is required for Thayer Academy to still use the field number one, remains are 26 spaces. Of that, 102 spaces, 76 is going to be allocated for the commercial recreational use that's before you tonight. We would propose that, as asked by the staff, the staff wanted a clear and legal easements or easements, so that they're able to access the property from Braxton Street, through the existing parking lot, and through the traffic circulating ways, you know, service their facility. What we propose to do by this is to enter into an access and parking easement, which would define those rights, and also put a ground lease plan that would include 76 parking spaces in the existing parking lot, and connect it to the building. That way, the lease plan and our ground lease will be accurate, and also will be a guide to the assessors when they make the assessment on taxes. Because clearly, the only one that determines what the classification is, is the assessors, but it will be commercial, it will be taxable. So, that the 76 spaces, the majority of the existing parking area, the connecting roads to it, and the commercial facility itself will be taxable. The remaining property, which is field number one, the lower field, and those detention bases, and so forth, which abut Braxton Street, as well as the four tennis courts up top on the upper-level fields, will be educational and tax-exempt. So, that plan, which I think, in the past, when this has occurred, in similar circumstances, a condition is entered into, and before the applicant commences any authorized activities, then they would be required to have the plan submitted to the board, likely to solicit for review. And that's what we would propose to do, for the benefit of Thayer Academy and everyone else.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yeah, so, we can agree or not agree, but I guess the key point is, we have a condition which allows for this conversation to take place. You know, the assessors may have a different opinion. My point from the very beginning is, if they're using it for the new facility, it should be taxable. Parking, whatever else, open space, and nothing, you know, I don't really wanna hear about the Dover Amendment, but, you know, to be fair, if it's being used for that, then it should be considered part of that.
Well, I don't think it's the Dover Amendment as far as use. I think it's really-
Well, you know, non-taxable because it's educational.
It's taxable, it's Chapter 59, which are the tax statutes.
Fine, fine. So, as long as we are protected to have a discussion with the assessors on that, that was my key point.
I have a copy of the suggested language to be included in the condition.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Are we talking about Condition 68?
Let me make sure.
So, 68 is, it reads, "The area to be considered associated with this use and not exempt from zoning, or associated with a nonprofit, is the entire lease area and 77 of the parking spaces in the upper parking area." And that's what is needed for Mr. DeVales's facility to comply with zoning. The remaining field, the tennis courts, the detention basin that's associated with the upper field, and the other 26 parking spots are Thayer's. At least, that was my intention.
Okay. That's what Mr. Johnson was referring to.
Right.
Okay, what if the assessors wanna change that?
I don't, from what standpoint?
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying, they haven't looked at it.
I mean, that, whether or not that statement is still valid?
Right.
How they go about taxing something, I don't, I can't weigh in on that part of it.
All right, so-
I think it's clear, and it has been represented to the council.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk to Mr. Brinkman if need be.
And it's the same as, if you may take, the same as the Braintree High School Athletic Complex, which is zoned, also Highway Business District, which is also taxable, that property's paying taxes on it. It's not, when the dominant use is no longer education, then you, then it becomes, it's no longer taxes and property.
Okay, I think we've covered enough ground. Thank you, sir.
If I might, could I submit these?
Also, I just wanna check, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we covered, since it's been a little bit, the last time, that if extra police were needed, I think Mr. DeVales said that that would not be a problem. Is that sufficiently covered, public safety and some one of our conditions?
I haven't put any conditions in about police. What type of application of police are you relating to?
You have a traffic problem, and after five attempts, you know, people feel that we need to have a detail involved.
Okay.
I believe Mr. DeVales says he's had this happen at his other facilities.
Yep, well, I just asked the application of it, so we can include in the conditions the use of traffic details, if warranted.
Okay, perfect.
And that's sort of a situation where, if they feel they need it, they would use them. If there's a whole sort of thing going on up there, and, you know, then we would have a discussion with Mr. DeVales, and consult the fire, excuse me, the police department, and work through that.
Okay. And I don't recall if we asked this the last time, but are we anticipating any signage changes with the new facility?
We briefly discussed it previously, that the, I think the signage down on Braxton and Washington that say Thayer, Southland, that's fine for us. Once people find us, they'll know where we are. Would have signage on the building that would be part of the current code. We wouldn't be-
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you, Mr. DeVales. And not to put him on the spot, but I see Mr. Stevenson here, and we haven't really had any comments from any Thayer people. I don't know if he wanted to make any comments.
I just should point out that also, from Thayer Academy, is Bill Stevenson, who is the Assistant Treasurer of the Board of Trustees, as well as a member of the Board of Trustees, and Mr. Michael Joe, who has shepherded this project through for the trustees of Thayer Academy. We were both present, and if you have any questions directly, we can answer them.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to recognize Mr. Stevenson, because I know that he has been, worked with us, I'll use that term, over the past 68 years or so on multiple projects. I heard he was gonna retire, and I just wanted to thank him for his efforts, and I just wanted to wish him well. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Member Joyce, any questions, comments?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and maybe even just staff can clarify. I noted in the original review of the plans where staff had asked questions and the applicant had responded. I just wanted to confirm that the applicant's responses were sufficient. One item was with regards to the parking spaces. I think you had made a comment about not upgrading any stormwater when they were using 75 spaces off-site. Sounded like one of, let me see if I can find it.
Which item, Member Joyce? I'm sorry.
I'm just going to look. Number six, under site drainage and drainage calculations. Will there be any stormwater improvements in the existing parking area, of which 75 of the 102 parking spaces will be dedicated to the proposed use? I believe the applicant said that there were not any improvements and I just wanted to verify that that was acceptable to staff.
There are no additional improvements. My understanding, and somebody that's a PE jump in, is that the, those areas are, and the drainage for that is already part of the design with the existing basin that's close to Washington and Braxton. And then there's also a very large basin out in the back that was for the three fields that were lined up that this building is actually going to tie into.
Yes, and I'd like to confirm those statements. So, we have no additional drainage for the 70, the 102 parking spaces as that's completely addressed on the Braxton/Washington Street side?
Okay. I apologize if I missed that.
No, that's why we're here, is to confirm that everything is accounted for and we're complete with you.
And then the only other question, comment, I know that we had at one point talked about potentially having more designated pedestrian access from Washington Street and it seems like that's kind of shaken out as not being economically feasible and that pedestrian traffic through the parking lot, because the parking lot would be low flow, low kind of usage, would be safe enough. And I just wanted to confirm, I guess, with you guys, that that's kind of been discussed and agreed upon, that there would not be any sort of designated pedestrian access across that.
There has not been. I did make that comment a while back and I believe that the concern, I think the board members are familiar with the slope out there, Mr. Caderro, there's nothing really that could be done in that area that's going to, that's going to meet ADA accessibility, unfortunately. I think the intent is to have people, and I've made some other recommendations on employee parking in some areas of the site, that not necessarily all the way up there, but along the access drive. And I really think the intent is to probably not even have people parking up in that area. Obviously, in larger events, there's going to be some overflow and unfortunately, it's just, they just can't accommodate it.
Yeah.
Short of doing major, major, you know, regrading.
Okay. And then this project was, had a conservation commission permitting associated with it? Where does that, where does that stand?
That was approved a couple of months ago.
Okay.
Yep, and I've been coordinating with Kelly to make sure that we're consistent in our conditions related to drainage.
Okay. And at one point, we had talked about some parking spaces being set in reserve. Is that still the intent along the edge of the site there?
Yes, it is, ma'am, and that's also a component of our conservation permit. It was a balance between the empirical data and support for the building itself and we're overparked if we meet the zoning, so we could provide an improvement to mark some of the spaces as reserved. So, 51 spaces will be designated on this property as reserved, so therefore not constructed. It will be, they will remain as previous and then through usage of the facility, if they're determined to be required, then would be required to construct.
That's great. That's great. Good idea.
And it was a great recommendation by staff, of course. So, thank you for that.
And I think just to know on the, I know we're looking into meeting minutes on the time and I hadn't noted any times at the February meeting. In the December meeting, I had noted hours of Operation 5, 30 to 11, but it could have been a misunderstanding about the actual rink time, starting at 11 and ending after 11. I know there's a chart in there that shows potential use times for Thayer and I think that timetable goes to 10, so I think it was just kind of potentially just a misunderstanding of what your intent was for the hours. That's it, Chairman. Thank you.
All right. It's been a long, long road for yous. Have you read the conditions?
We have, Mr. Chairman.
Any issues with the conditions?
No issues per se, Mr. Chairman, other than, again, the opportunity to work with staff to refine. Melissa's already answered the widening comment at Route 37, which is really infeasible in our opinion. The programmatic adjustments, we'll have to sort those out through the course of study and evaluation as the facility is opened. The last item is sort of a sensitive one, which is, you know, $15,000 prepayment relative to the, to a traffic fund for the town. It was generally surprising to us, you know, so we'd like to discuss that for just a moment and really determine if that is a required element of this project and its approval, you know, given the, you know, the ongoing studies that will be put into place here.
So, you're saying that it's something that's doable for you?
Yes.
Thank you. That's great. You know what? You've been great to deal with. I know we put you through hurdles and that's the way, you know what, that's how you get to some agreement like this. I don't have any questions of you. I do have compliments that you've worked out on this and thank you. What I do want the board to consider is a motion to enter all, any and all correspondence on this project.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I did check on another note, I did check on the minutes. I guess it was the last, according to the minutes, the ice time, the last sheet of ice to be used would start at 11. So, in, you know, I think, I misunderstood that too, so it was a misunderstanding and I think on all our parts, how it was relayed and how we accepted it, so.
I'll make sure that's very clear, Mr. Chairman, too, as far as the last ice and so that, you know, when we're all long gone, it's clear.
Yeah, yeah. Long gone. And, you know, I, okay, don't all jump up and down, I was being long gone, but anyways, you know what, I think this has been going on enough, my opinion. I'm going to leave it to the board, but I would, I'd be open to a motion to close a public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also entertain a motion to move this along and approve it.
Motion to approve file number 1713 for Edge Sports Group Special Permit, Use and Watershed and Site Plan Review, taking into consideration the recommendations of staff through the draft conditions that were prepared in advance of the meeting and giving the applicant and staff the ability to fine tune a couple of items that, you know, need to be fine tuned to complete the intent of the conditions.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board.
The next matter on the agenda would be, okay, we have 1515 Washington Street, but that's, no, I'm sorry, no, 236-240 Wood Road. I apologize for that. I don't understand his reasoning here, the legal decision.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Thomas Moriarty. For the record, I represent PGG Outdoor LLC, DBA Logan Digital, in connection with its application for a special permit to construct and operate a monopole digital billboard on property located at 236-240 Wood Road. The first point of business I thought I would address with the board relates to the perception of the elephant that was in the room at the end of the meeting on May 8th. There was a suggestion that the board's approval of another billboard project within 300 feet might have created an impediment to the board's further consideration and granting of the applicant's request for a special permit. My understanding was the board was going to talk to town council. I don't, I certainly don't know if that occurred and I don't know if the board has got an opinion. I don't want to waste the board's time if they've received an opinion that it can't be granted.
We did receive an opinion and as a lawyer, and, you know, three of us are lawyers here, I don't quite understand it, but that's okay. It's...
Sometimes I don't understand the opinions I give.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. It's, it's in violation of the ordinance.
That's awesome.
But it's not in violation of the state requirements. We have an ordinance that says that we can't, the actual permitting would be, the planning board's position would be that we're allowing one, so how do we allow the other one? But the ultimate licensee, license, license, permit granting authority would be the state and then the state takes what they have into consideration, which is 1,000 feet from each other. And I'll be honest with you, I just, if you read the opinion, it just...
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I did discuss this with the town solicitor and I apologize, we got this in almost close to quarter four today, but he said that basically, it would be the outdoor advertising making the decision on which billboard would get erected, I guess is the best way to say it.
I just worry about the legal ramifications of us approving, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, please don't understand, I'm not saying what I'm saying, but we're approving two and then, I mean, we're approving two in violation of the ordinance because we have to consider that once we approve something, it's an existence and they have, and that's why there's that timeframe, we have to bill by, then it's no longer in existence if you don't break ground. But now, the state, the state takes over and says if it's 1,000 square feet, 1,000 feet away, it can't, I get, what I gather by this is that we could approve a bunch of them, you know, and leave it up to the state because the state's ultimately going to, that's kind of troublesome at the same time.
From the applicant's perspective, Mr. Chairman, it is, at a minimum, not an impediment simply by having approved. If there was an existing, constructed and state-approved digital billboard within 300 feet, I think the circumstances would be different.
It just, our ordinance doesn't get that detailed. So, we have to consider if we approve something, let me ask you a question. Planning board approves something, at that moment, it's approved. Does it or does it not exist?
I would say it does not exist and it may, and it may never exist. The mere approval...
Well, but that's, I mean, that's why there's a timeframe saying it exists until they don't act for a certain, a year or two years, whatever. Then it no longer exists, someone else can come in. My question is, I guess my concern is, if we approve one and approve the other, what's the deciding factor? What is it, a race to the end? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think the way this board would effectively address it is to condition the grant of any digital billboard on the reality that no other digital billboard then exists so that even if you granted relief, construction could not commence if, as a result of some prior grant, construction was commenced and the billboard was up. Because the bylaw doesn't say approved. The bylaw says a billboard. And the mere fact of approval is just a predicate condition to the ultimate construction. That approval can be appealed, you know, that approval could be appealed unsuccessfully and the state may not grant its approval, so there are many other steps that could...
I said before, it's an interesting argument and, you know, I think by what the council, town council says, we in essence can approve two and let it be erased to what gets done.
I think too, because the bylaw speaks to the outdoor advertising, that's why he felt it's left with them as to which one will be built.
Well, so it would be a race at that point. I mean theoretically, what's, let me just, one second. Under the CMRs, you can't be within 1,000 feet of each other. So, under the ordinance, we can really then, at that point, approve three and say, you guys all have to race yourselves to the outdoor advertising. Whoever gets it built first wins. I mean, theoretically, wouldn't that be...
Honestly, from the applicant's perspective, you could approve more because it has to do with constructed billboards?
Yeah.
So theoretically, you could have them spaced out every 10 feet, but they just couldn't be constructed if they violate either the 300-foot requirement or the 1,000-foot requirement.
Wow. It's interesting. Has the board been able to read that, read the decision? It just, it's, well, you know, I don't think, right now, it's an impediment for us to move forward. I don't, I don't know why, I'm just thinking down the road what could happen. I mean, we could really put the planning board in position where, you know, where we're in a tough, where we're approving things knowing that one's going to fail and if, and if down the road, say the building department, some other department drags their feet a little bit, it could cause a real problem with the state.
Certainly understand the chairman's position.
I mean, it's interesting, but I'm, you know, obviously, I'm just bringing that up.
Yeah, the whole thing. I mean, the 29, the other one was a remand. They, you appealed that decision, correct?
Yes. Well, the applicant did and the applicant's landlord did.
Yeah. I'm just saying it's just...
Yeah, just saying that, so that's under appeal now, then they're going to get something and then they're going to appeal that. This is like, you know...
Again, it's...
Get together, split the money, I don't know.
What do you think?
Yeah, I don't know, has anyone had the chance to read that? Has anyone read that?
Yeah. To make it clear, it's not an impediment, but now, I thought we were folding the hearing and then...
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, that given the fact that we had a local ordinance passed, gave us some authority, obviously, and set some rules, and we went through an initial round and your application was rejected for various reasons, well, the lumber liquidator one.
They withdrew.
They withdrew, I'm sorry, okay. So, it could have been. So, it's not just simply on the number of, one of the items was on the number, but it was also on the quality of life, if I recall correctly, that this came up. And the question was, how many of these signs, you know, logistically as well as, you know, from safety reasons, do we want to have on that road?
But, and that's the argument, the reality, I guess what the decision is saying is that one that is approved and has been built, in our minds, has to be nonexistent until the state approves it. So, we could approve, as you said, 20 and until the state approves them, one, the others really, you know, they aren't in existence when we approve them. They're not in existence till the state approves it.
But to address the board's concern, there could never be, in compliance with the town bylaw, two within 300 feet.
Correct.
It couldn't happen.
Yeah. So, I just think at this moment, I, that's just my opinion, I believe it with the board, I don't see it as an impediment. I don't know what the future holds, you know, that's, but I just don't see it as a, based on the town council and his opinion, I just don't see it as an impediment right now.
So...
In fact, he's saying that it's not, his last, his last paragraph.
On the other issues, this was before the peer review and today, we received a letter from the peer review and they are satisfied with the application. They do have, they did point out some issues with the shadow, but those are also issues we've had with the other boards too. There's no board out there that doesn't cast some kind of shadow somewhere, but that was the only comment they made. So, it's basically at a point where the board can provide me with direction, we'll move it along.
There was only one additional piece of information I wanted to provide the board in response to Member Joyce's questioning at the last hearing. The question was, how was that rendering created? The rendering was created in connection with the crane, with a flag on top. We've clarified that, we've provided that information to the board. The reality, however, is that the height that was shown in that rendering is accurate premised upon the mechanism or method... premised upon the mechanism or methodology that was employed. So there was some question about whether or not the rendering artificially increased, showed the height. That is accurate based on that methodology. The only point I would make is that even though the height of the sign from ground to top is 75 feet, the actual elevation at the top of the sign is lower than the sign that the board recently approved on 290 Wood Road. So it's a taller sign, but it's actually at an elevation that's lower than that other sign. And other than that, I'm available for questions, but...
So I will tell you, I got to give you credit because nobody else brought that argument up all along, all these... Everybody was racing to come to the planning board.
Well, the broken clock is right at least two times a day, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, exactly.
It won't take too much.
Yep. Well, you know... All right. I think, you know, first of all, I can open up the public. If anybody wishes to make any comments or bring anything to everybody's attention, please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Ingber. I am the nominee trustee of the 290 Wood Road property where the electronic billboard was recently approved. I'm also their lawyer. I wanted to raise, I think, four points here. Forgive me, I'm under the weather and my voice is coming and going. The planning board had previously raised the issue of proximity to the on-ramp, and I... You're not going to hear from me that an electronic billboard is inherently a problem, clearly, but this is closer to the ramp than the 290 Wood Road sign is. The board has raised that as an issue. I don't know how close is too close, but this one is closer. The second issue is the planning board also previously raised the issue of the fall zone, and there are two issues. One is the proximity to, I believe it's a hydrogen tank. I'm not sure that I heard in the public hearing anything other than a kind of a vague assurance that it's okay, it's within X number of... Outside of X number of feet. But there was no discussion about what it's like for a billboard to fall over and what the consequences of that are and what the effect of it is. You heard me say that it's an unusual thing for a billboard to fall over. I stand by that. It has happened, not frequently. But again, the planning board raised that issue, so I am asking you to look a little more closely at that because apparently that tank, if compromised, could be a serious health and safety issue. The second issue is that the planning board also noted, and I'll just remind the board, that the fall zone includes the Route 128 right-of-way. The third point is that I would ask the planning board to look very carefully at the relative height, the elevations of the 290 Wood Road and the 236-240 Wood Road. And the reason I raise that is that when our sign... If you're standing in the parking lot between the buildings at 236-240 Wood Road, you would have to crane your neck to look up at the height of our billboard. By my reckoning, the billboard will be at eye level, standing on our property. That is a very significant effect on a neighboring property. I'd call your attention to 135-503I4, which relates to glare. And also, not 4 is for glare. 8 is economic effect. I'd point out that while, right now, the property is improved by a karting facility and a gym, and there are no windows or virtually no windows that might affect it, the fact is that at some point, that billboard is going to be there for a long time, and this property may very well be redeveloped for some other use. I'd point out that there are three hotels on Wood Road now. That is a thing. That is a routine use of this area. And having a billboard at eye level, or approximately eye level, is a very significant incursion in terms of glare, in terms of economic effect. Under 135-910.02B, you are supposed to look at significant damage to the visual environment. And once again, I would say that we are extremely affected by that. The fourth item I would mention is that this board required us to remove all ground signs. And the applicant for 236-240 Wood Road, last I recall, said, "Well, we can remove one of the signs, which is the small sign under the lumber liquidator sign, but we can't do anything about lumber liquidators." And the final point I want to make, I have not seen whatever correspondence there was with town council, so I'm really not... I can't speak point by point to it, but it does seem to me that if the planning board grants a permit, that you're telling us that we can build. If we violate a... Well, there's any number of things that can be violated. It could be building code violations, but I don't know what... I don't know how the building inspector makes a determination of whether to issue a permit or not. We have a special permit. This board has granted us the right to build, and it's a right to build once the planning board gives that permit. There are conditions. Chairman is right that there's state approval as well. And I can imagine a situation where the board or somebody may raise the objection at some point and say, "Listen, this thing is not going forward. The issue is moot, and the board should take some action." And of course, there is the usual requirement that construction begin within the required time for any special permit. That, it seems to me, is what applies here. If the board grants us the permit, we have that right for a certain period of time. I don't say there's not another view of it, and obviously, town council has taken it, but that's where I'm putting it forward.
I don't disagree with you. I, you know, I... You know, I... But at the same time, the building department couldn't issue a permit till the state approved it either. Right? So...
When the second person comes and says, "Here's my special permit. I've been... The town granted me this permit."
Wouldn't have to be approved by the state also prior to building permit... The building permit being granted, so...
Yes. But I don't... I can't see how the board punts to the state. I just don't see that. The board owes an obligation to the applicant, owes an obligation to process, owes an obligation to the building department, and I don't think you intend to put the building inspector, who is going to issue a building permit, in a position of having to weigh these things. This doesn't make sense to me.
I see it wrought with issues. I do. You know, I... But the issues don't make it an impediment now, but I think... My concern is, we approve... Say, we go forward and two get approved, and then you go through the state process, and then there's a delay on the towns pot mailing the decision, doing anything, which then hampers one over the other. It just... It just... I'm concerned about what happens after we say we approve two. And then it's a race to the state and, you know, the cost for the applicants.
Where the town has a...
Yeah.
I just... I don't see it. I mean, it's complicated, clearly.
Like I say, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you, and I think the other attorney brought up a great point. I'm relying, and this is just me, I'm relying on town council that makes it clear that the issuance of one permit is not an impediment to issue another permit, and it's really, you know, in a nonlegal way. It's, "Hey, you're off to the races. Both of you run up there and do what you got to do, and see whoever's going to approve by the state first builds."
Puts the building inspector in an awfully funny position.
But the building inspectors are involved. Because the... I said, because the building inspectors are involved until after the state approves. Right?
Yes.
So the state has to approve... The state's going to approve one or the other, and then the building department gets involved. And then somebody comes out and says, "Listen, I have the approval from the planning board, and I have the proof of the state. Now you can issue a building permit." The state... I mean, nobody can go to the building department until they go to the state and get approved there. Now, the question arises, because it's not within... It's... We have the order of within 300 feet. The state is 1,000 feet. Can the state approve both and say, "Hey, listen, according to us, you're within 1,000 feet. You know, you're not within a..." Well, the state has 1,000 feet, right? We've made it less.
But what stops the state from having the same argument that you're proposing here, which is, "Well, you know, we'll approve both of them and see who builds it first. Who puts the first shovel in the ground?" That's not the way business is done.
Again, I'm going to say it again. I didn't... I didn't... I questioned it when it was first argued. I question it now, but the rationale the town council uses is kind of valid at the same time in saying that it's not an impediment for us to approve two, and we leave it up to the applicants. Again, it's... I understand exactly what you're saying, because I find issues going down the road, you know, when you approve two applicants to build something.
Well, I would ask the board to think about the practicality of this. Punting to a state agency is not what you typically see. I don't know, under what other circumstances, this board has ever done something like that. But if I had to emphasize one issue here above all else, I would very much ask you to look very closely at what the glare is going to look like, because I think you'll find that it is approximately eye level, and that will be devastating to our property. And that's three different areas of the bylaw. Ask you to look at those things, and I see that the... I believe the application should fail on that basis.
Thank you.
I should say one other thing. It's I have absolutely no interest in the hockey issue, but my recollection was that it was midnight.
Yeah, you know what? Actually, the minutes show that, yeah. So now you lose every argument in front of us now, for not taking our side. No. It just... I... Again, I think it was a good argument. I just, you know, I'm going to leave it up to the board right now as to where we go from here. First of all, do you have any questions, comments?
I had a question about the shadow study. Christine, you mentioned it, that we just got that today. Is that the peer?
We got the peer review's response to it. He has been working with... We've been involved in correspondence back and forth, but the final letter came today. But the comment about the shadow study was not something that just came up today. It's been banded back and forth.
Well, I guess, looking at it, it wasn't really clear. What's the kind of end state there?
They just pointed out, as they have with other applications, that...
They cast a shadow?
It casts a shadow, yeah.
Where does...
On Route 128 and potentially over to Forbes Road.
Okay. That was the only question on the specifics of that, as far as the opinion from town council. I don't know how that... How you view that affecting the outcome of this, but it doesn't seem like he would have a problem with us.
I think he's making it clear that we have to go forward in a manner that the one that we permitted before is, for the purpose of this one, is non-existent because it does not physically exist. So it's, you know... So we have to look at this in a vacuum, as if the other one doesn't exist, that we didn't permit. Well, whether they permitted or not, does it matter? It's not in existence right now as we speak. I think that's what the decision... The decision was available, obviously. Everybody can look at it, but I think that's what it says. It just says that we have to look at this one separate from the one that's already permitted.
I thought we talked about the hydrogen station up there last meeting and the fall zone. And in fact, I think at the last couple of meetings, and as is shown on the plan, that it's twice the distance. I mean, it is, again, the distance, I should say, of the sign away from the end of the fall zone. So it's not within the fall zone, and the fall zone doesn't take into consideration any adjustment for elevation. We just used 110% of the height of the sign, and it's not within.
Okay. That's right, though. I thought we discussed that. So I have nothing further at the moment.
Do you have any questions, comments?
No questions.
Just a clarification. I know you had provided some additional pictures of the rendering with the crane. So it looks like... Was the crane done prior to the pictorial rendering you had provided, or was that done after the pictorial?
It was done before. Actually, I was unaware that the applicant had used the crane in order to generate the renderings. So just clarifying that.
So, okay. So the top of the flag on the top of the crane was supposed to be the top of the billboard?
Yes.
Okay. And that was just done for the single height that you were applying for? Did you do any other analysis for lower heights or anything like that?
No.
Okay. I think that's it on the additional material that we have.
Well, I don't have any questions. My... One issue was when you brought it up, I wanted an opinion from town council. They gave it to us. So at this point, I'm accepting this as what it is, so I have no further questions on this. I'm going to leave it up to the board as to what the next step would be.
I know on past... On past applications, on almost all the applications, you know, we had, because of the uniqueness of the site with the highway being below the properties along Wood Road, some elevated more than others on top of the ledge, we had, I think, almost all the applicants provide additional renditions at alternate heights than just the 75, so that we could kind of understand if it was at 75, you know, why it would need... And just to see if there was even to come down five feet, if that was possible, we were able to better visualize that. So I think I had mentioned that previously, but I didn't know if that was something that you would be providing or investigating, or if it's 75 feet, that's it. I don't... I'm just curious if that's even a possible thing that you could provide us.
So if I could have a moment, I'm certain that it could be provided. I have explored the notion... We've explored it, actually, in several different ways to try to reduce the height of the sign, but because we had to move back, unfortunately, when it was originally positioned, it was within the setback. And when it moved back, it went up just to clear the surrounding trees that are not on the applicant's landlord's property. But if... The chair will give me a moment just to confer with my client. So yes, the applicant is able to provide some additional renderings, adjusting the height down, let's say, two increments of five feet each, if that would be... Give you enough perspective.
They had the crane once. I don't know if there's a way to all, you know, use the crane location to do it. I don't know the best way to do it if you'd actually have to have another crane go out there, but I think past applications went from like 40 feet high up to 70 feet high, you know, and did it maybe in like 15-foot increments or something, just to kind of... I think if you only did five feet, it might not be visually impactful, but...
We can check the file as to the... I don't recall the increments. Okay.
Just give it substantial increments so we can see a difference.
Certainly.
Thanks. All right. So I'm going to, at this time, I mean, I'm going to take suggestions from the department, too. So how do you want to go forward?
Other than what Ms. Joyce...
How quick do you think you can get those? How quick do you think you can get those renderings in?
I'll play Mickey the Dunce again, Mr. Chairman.
No, it's all right, it's all right. I imagine they're gonna say very quick.
So we believe that we can use the existing crane that's already been put out there, and then use other points of reference in order to be able to show it in a rendering. If the board requires a new crane out there on site to be able to do it, it'll take a month. Otherwise, we can get it done pretty quickly.
I don't think we need a crane, do we? If you can give us accurate, I'm actually, if you can give us accurate drawings using the existence of the crane that exists, that'd be sufficient, I think, but I'm gonna leave it up to the board. All right, so that'll be good. In the meantime, meantime, I...
I would say, councilor, that when we had the other applicants put a crane up at their sites, and we looked at it from different locations, driving on the highway, north-south, across the street, you could tell the difference. And honestly, when I look at your pictures, I get no real frame of reference because they're so far away, they're not, they don't seem real, quite frankly. So I'm just gonna offer that up, and, you know, this is an interesting case, just given some of the legal things, so I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but you might want to think about what is in your best interests.
Understood, understood. In the defense of the legitimacy of the renderings that have provided, we have provided actually the photograph of the crane, and you can see by comparing the renderings, which have been reduced, we have in the record, to the crane, so that they are accurate, but I certainly understand the point being additional angles, additional heights will be helpful. Understood.
Yeah, they don't look real to me, honestly.
Understood.
I think of what we had seen in the past, is they hoisted a frame so that you could see the outline, and it's hard to see in the picture, I know you can see the flag, but it's hard to gauge, so they had hoisted a frame and took pictures coming both ways at the different heights, so it was a good visual. And we also knew when they were doing that, so if members were available to do a drive-by, that was an opportunity for them to see it in real life, and I think that was very helpful.
All right, so, will you have everything by next month?
Thirty, 30 days was the estimate that my client gave me to get a crane back out there and get it done. I would say, we would shoot for that, I mean, obviously, we would let staff know if we have any type of impediment and...
Okay, so that'll be good. So why don't we continue this to next month?
So the next meeting is July 10th, and the deadline to submit materials for that meeting is Wednesday, June 27th.
Yeah, you know what, just because we're asking for this, they can give them more time, I think, you know, I know the deadline is...
I'm not, we have the hall, I'm not doing a review.
I don't have any problems with it.
Just a minute when you can, prior to the next meeting.
The other applicants have submitted things the day of.
Yeah, just a minute prior to the next meeting.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so the chair wants to have a motion to continue.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Next matter on the agenda is...
Can you just sign the extension form, Attorney Moriarty?
Washington Street File 1803, that's Customs Space Applicant.
Which one's next?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board. I'll try to make this pretty brief. We received the conditions from staff that were drafted, we reviewed and have no problem with any of them, and I appreciated the great suggestion to have us kind of provide the list of tenant businesses. I believe it was six months and a year in, just to make sure everybody's kind of on the same page. So I suppose I'm here just to kind of take the temperature and see how the board feels about the conditions that were presented as they stand now.
Here's, I will tell you, I have, I have run into a conflict in this matter, so I have to, yeah, I have to withdraw, recuse myself from any further hearings on this.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I've spoken to staff about the issue. I understand that the application can't be approved today, and I'm prepared to withdraw it, as I've kind of been told.
I want to apologize to you, I didn't know...
No worries, no worries. I just, again, I'm here because I already booked the flight, and I wanted to just take the temperature and see if there were any additional, like, pieces of feedback before I'm likely here next month again.
I have to recuse myself, but she'll run it for me.
All right. I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, so I apologize.
Sorry about that.
But, so, if you wanted to just, if you could, just please repeat what your intent was with the application, given the chairman's conflict.
Yeah, certainly. So the three remaining kind of board members have been through the various hearings, and I hope have reviewed the different conditions, and I just wanted to kind of take the temperature and see if there were any additional concerns or feedback on the conditions as they, as they stand now, just so if there are any revisions needed for when the application is resubmitted for, you know, another round of review, we don't have to take any additional kind of extra meetings.
Okay, okay. If I may, just ask staff to confirm where we're at with the conditions, and if there was anything outstanding from your end, before I just open it up to the board again.
We reviewed the file, we went back through the minutes, I feel the conditions address everything that was either asked or provided by the applicant, so I think it's in good standing and the findings behind it. However, in light of this, the recommendation from staff and the town solicitor was that withdraw, reapply, and hopefully, Mr. Baker, the new member, will be here next month.
Okay, okay. Member Downey, do you have any questions or comments regarding that?
No, he's, so he's gonna withdraw and then reapply in front of the entire board minus the chairman?
Correct.
Can't vote.
He'll remove himself from a future meeting as well, but we will have a fifth member where we don't have that tonight.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you getting the lease to us, as I suggested last, last time, a lot of people don't, don't sometimes follow up when I ask for stuff. But, no, I don't, I think that's a good plan, because you want, obviously, four members, if you can have them, you'd like everybody, but you can't have everything you want, but I appreciate your attention to this, and your patience as well.
Okay. Member McCallum, do you have any, any additional comments, questions?
No, we'll just wait for our, for our new member, because, I mean, basically, that's the legal requirement, so...
Yeah, and I understand that, I just wanted to see if, you know, there were any objections or comments from any existing board members now that we could address before that future meeting, but if not, if there aren't any, I will kind of submit the withdrawal at this point to staff.
Do we have to... The board should motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice so that he can refile.
Okay.
Did you, have anything?
Excuse me?
I thought you were gonna say something.
Oh, no, no, I'm just trying to stay awake.
All right. Chair, I'll entertain a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.